Item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve city council minutes of June seven and June nine, 2021. B licenses, renewal of Class C beer wine permit for Chen's Garden, subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion to approve cigarette tobacco licenses effective July one, 2021, for C's liquor, Cargo Express, Casey's eighteen ninety-four, Casey's twenty-nine oh-two, Casey's twenty-eight seventy-seven, Brew Oil number thirty-one, Brew Oil number thirty-two, Brew Oil number forty, Fairway Stores, Inc., Hy-Vee Store, Hy-Vee Gas Station, Walmart twenty-seven fourteen, Walgreens one-one-one-five-three, and Tobacco, Vape, and ECIG LLC. Licenses are issued by the state of Iowa. D is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 Spencer Police Department Parking Lot Replacement Project and the taking of bids, therefore, excuse me, with a letting date of July fifteen, 2021, three o'clock PM, with a hearing date of July nineteen, 2021, six-thirty PM. E is a resolution proposing the transfer of a triangular tract of land in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-four Township ninety-six North, Range thirty-seven West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Clay County, Iowa, to Eckhart Land Company Incorporated. Public hearing date of seven-six, 2021, at six-thirty PM. F is a resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on proposal to issue hospital revenue bonds or notes in one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed seven million dollars for the purpose of financing capital improvement projects for the benefit of Spencer Municipal Hospital with a hearing date of July nineteen, 2021, at six-thirty PM. I see the hospital CEO, Bill Baumgartner, is in attendance. If you have any questions, I'm sure Bill's happy to answer them. G is a resolution approving transfer of funds from the Spencer Municipal Electric Utility to the Spencer Municipal Water Utility. H is a resolution requesting funding from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And I is a motion to approve a residential tax abatement application for KBBR properties at seven-oh-nine East Eighth Street, and that concludes the consent agenda. First by Bill?
Second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion or question on the items?
I guess, Brian, probably, on the American Rescue Plan, what are, what projects are involved in that, or what do we have to do on that, on that process?
Really, to get it started, is just, the resolution authorizes the mayor to sign two documents that attest to our agreement to several different things. One's the fair housing, and then the other one's a list of things. And then, we send those to the state, because we're not an entitlement community, and then our funds flow through the state. We're estimated at about one-point-five million. What we're doing with that will be the future of, future discussions of the council. We haven't, the only thing we've kind of committed is about two, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred thousand for the treatment plant project, and then the rest will be decided, you know, in the coming months as to what we would like to do with that. There's some stipulations as to what can and can't be done with the funds, but as we learn that, we'll have, you know, over the summer, we will kind of have some discussions as to what we want to use those funds for.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking at, were the stipulations on that, but we'll, we'll find out more on those stipulations.
Yeah, there's, there's four. One of them being that it can be used for, easiest one for us to utilize is, obviously, for water and sewer infrastructure. That's going to be the easiest one to fall under. There's one for what is termed as lost revenue, but trying to figure out what our actual losses in revenue were is tricky.
Right.
Just because I don't think we had much lost revenue due to the pandemic as a city. And then one is if there were emergency responders and stuff, you could pay out additional salaries to them, but it appears, you know, that's more geared towards, like, hospitals or first, first aid more than what may fall under our realm. So, we'll get a little bit more clarifications, but like I said, the first swipe at it, the easiest is going to be the sewer infrastructure, and that is going to be our easiest to qualify.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Think you're on? Yep, Bill?
I've got a question in for either Bill or Brian, because when the, whatever the hospital does for bonding affects our cities. Is there a timeframe, if my memory serves me correctly, there's a timeframe where those funds have to be used so you do not get in an arbitrage situation, which would, which could be detrimental to the city and the hospital? And Brian, do you know the answer to that question? In other words, if you borrow the money now, you got to use it sometime, and is there a period of time when you have to use all those funds?
Typically, it's three years from the date of closing of the bonds that you have to spin the proceeds.
Okay.
The last arbitrage currently is an unheard-of term, because it hasn't applied in the longest, probably the last, well, fifteen years or so, interest rates haven't been there.
Shows you how old I am.
What?
That shows you how old I am.
Well, we may be getting there again, but currently, it hasn't. What will affect a little bit is the issuances. So, the city is, as an entity, is allowed ten million dollars per year to issue bank-qualified notes, which basically allows more local banks to be able to bid on them. And so, where it does affect us most, more is like with, when SMU or the hospital want to issue debt, they, their debt also goes against our ten million annual cap of that ten million. So, we'll be, on our next meeting, you'll see that we're going to start debt proceedings for the SRF loan for the water treatment plant, which is about three million. So, that's why we kind of, we're splitting it this year with the hospital, it's at seven million for them and seven, or three for us. And then they'll eat up our ten million bank-qualified debt issuance for 2021.
So, that'd be, okay, so it'd start July one of this year?
No, it's calendar year.
Oh, it's calendar year. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so, usually, I think sometimes either the hospital hasn't had a lot of debt, and then because we are their technical owner, we have to issue their debt through us, so that's why we have to hold the hearing and have the final say. We're kind of the conduit lender through them, but their, their issuance won't affect our debt capacity or anything that, their revenue bonds off the hospital, so.
I'm not too sure the hospital's ever had debt, have we? Long-term debt of any kind? Long time ago.
Sorry, Bill, could, could you, yeah, step up? So, you're officially on the record?
The hospital has debt. Probably about a year ago, we did become debt-free. So, yeah. When we did the surgical center project, fifteen years ago, there was about twenty million in debt that was paid off just within the last couple of years.
Thank you, Bill. And Bill? Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
This triangular tract of land that we're letting Eckhart's land go back, did we ever have to put any utilities in that easement?
We did not. It was, it was a part of the project when we're going to put the storm sewer across, there's a culvert under the road there, and it didn't take up as much room as anticipated. So, we called in a utility locate and double-checked to make sure nobody has any utilities, utilities in it. We just finished that up today. It's clear, and we're, we're comfortable with releasing that back. And I think I should square off that lot and make it a lot better for building space for development.
Makes sense. Good. Thank you, Donovan. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four, new business. Four A is a motion to approve agreement with Cryer and Blaine Incorporated of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, for the Spencer Public Library HVAC Improvements Project.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by George. Questions or discussion? I believe this was discussed at committee. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item four B is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2021 Fourth Street Resurfacing Project with Blacktop Service Company for six-hundred-sixty-one thousand, one-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Contract ID is two-one-dash-seven-one-seven-zero-dash-six-two-nine. First by George. Second by Tom. Discussion or question on this?
Yeah, I was kind of excited to see that four-hundred thousand of it was coming through a grant, you know, since we were, we were going to do this project anyway, but it looks like that, that freed up some, some money available there. So, because what was our, it was still that seven-hundred capital improvement price that we were looking at.
Yeah, so the grant we obtained actually was five years ago.
Right.
In anticipation of the project, since it's a federally funded, Brian, what's the right term? Designated. Slipped my, tip of my tongue there. So, it's a designated route, so it makes it eligible for, for funding. And when that funding was available, it's called T-21. They've recently changed the name on that. So, we had the four-hundred thousand secured, and then, yes, did have a budget of around seven-fifty for the total project. So, it's nice that it came in below.
Mark, did they give any time of a start?
We don't have the start date right now. Ross will be able to give us a little more update after we finish the contracts. With a DOT letting, we're not even able to negotiate or communicate with them until we get the contract, so.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ron. Any other questions, comments on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four C is a resolution fixing the compensation of the acting city manager, interim Brian Weave. First by Bill. Second by Tracy. Discussion or questions on this? All right. Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item D is a motion to approve the job description of the city manager of the city of Spencer, as presented in the committee meeting last week. First by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on this? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Four E is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson P.C. for the 2021 Seventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron, second by Tom. Any discussion or questions on that?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Tom?
This is an hourly contract, because the number of hours aren't clearly predictable. But Cruz, I suggested perhaps a not-to-exceed figure, and Cruz, Kate, and Nelson agreed to a not-to-exceed figure of eighteen thousand, five hundred, so I would suggest we include that in the approval.
Okay. You want me to reread the motion, Don?
I'll change my, to accept it with that eighteen thousand, five hundred. Is that what you said, Don? Limit on the contract? So, I'll first that with that stipulation in there.
Well, to be clear. So, does the, does the motion on the floor die, or do we just amend it?
If the mover and second are willing to amend it, you can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so Ron is willing, Tom is willing? All right. So, I'll reread it just to clarify. So, four E is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson P.C. for the 2021 Seventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project with a not-to-exceed hourly rate totaling eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Four F is a resolution approving an easement use agreement with Robert Bates and Kimberly Bates. First by Tracy.
I'll second.
Second by George, sounds like. Question, discussion on this? I know the staff has worked hard on this, as well as the property owners.
Can they just, to me, give an overview here?
Sure, Alec can.
Good evening. So, on the floor is an easement use agreement for the Bates to be able to put a construction item, well, a gazebo, into a existing river easement. Because it's in a existing river easement, we can't write a permit for it without this use agreement in place. What we, throughout the past month, we kind of dug into what all exists there, and found out the history of how this project came to be. Currently, there are concrete pavers, which are on top of a utility easement where a sewer, storm sewer exists. That project had been approved by my predecessors, and the project came to fruition probably about two-ish years ago, and that was it. They moved forward and added a concrete slab along the left, north-hand side of the pavers, where no building permit was needed for this type of work, and nothing was ever recorded with the city. So, when we went out there the original time, or in May here, to look at the building permit that was turned in, we didn't really have any knowledge of what existed there, because nothing ever needed to be recorded in the past. So, that's kind of what sparked the whole investigation into how it is going to end up. Bottom line is, the structure is going to be in an existing river easement. It's going to take no impact on the storm sewer, existing utility that's in the ground. In the event that we do need to access that storm sewer, the Bates understand that we either, A, we're going to give them plenty of heads-up notice to get out there and do it, or in the event of an emergency, and there's no time for us to get that moved, that the city is not liable for any damage in the entire project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Donovan. Any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Tom, get through your mic.
I just didn't see where we were invited when it's all finished.
The ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five, engineers report. Ross?
Good evening, everyone. I got a few projects to report on tonight. The first one's the 2021 manhole rehab project. Hydro Clean started last week on the manholes that need to be lined, concrete lined. They're about half-done with that. Should finish up this week. They'll have in play, cast-in-place lining to do yet, and also the repairs in the lift stations to complete that project, which will probably happen later in the summer the way it sounds. The 2021 sewer main repair project is going to kick off on Wednesday. That's going to require closing West Fourth Street from Sixth to Ninth Avenue West. That will probably be closed on Wednesday morning, and will probably be closed about a week by the time we get the concrete patching done. So. And the other project that's going to start towards the end of the week is the PCC patching with back excavating. They haven't indicated where they're starting yet, but it sounds like they'll be here at the end of the week, and probably take them about a week to get that work done also. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Item six, city managers' report, or I should say interim city managers' report. Brian?
At this point, I don't really have anything else to update the council on.
Any questions for Brian? All right. Item seven, mayor's report. We have some business of appointments to boards and commissions. As always happens this time of year, June thirtieth is when typically most of them expire. So, you will notice, motion A is a motion to approve appointments to city Spencer boards and commissions effective July one, 2021, for the following people. Kyle Norris to the airport board for a term that expires June thirty, 2025. Trevor Graves to the compensation advisory board, which expires June thirty, 2027. John Godey to the compensation board with a term expiring June thirty, 2027. Maureen Oshlin to the historic preservation commission with a term expiring June thirty, 2024. Randy Cothran to the Renaissance Initiative with a term expending, expiring six-thirty, 2024. Susie Harper to the Renaissance Initiative Committee with a term expiring June thirty, 2024. Steve Waller to the zoning board of adjustments, expiring June thirty, 2026. And Rich Prentice to the zoning board of adjustment with a term expiring June thirty, 2026.
Make a motion to approval?
First by, oh, go ahead. First by Donovan? Sorry. First by Donovan. Second by, I'll give it to Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you to everyone who's agreed to either serve again, or those new people that are coming on. City government would not function without your participation. Item B under seven is the motion to approve an appointment of Larry Rupert to the golf course board, effective immediately, to fulfill the term of Eric Stuckey, which expires on June thirty, 2024. First by Lauren. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to thank Eric for his many years of service to the golf board at the municipal course, and look forward to seeing Larry pick that term up until it expires. Final thing that I would like to talk about is the feedback and comments I've received on our committee meeting discussion last week about the free speech zones. Just wanted to update everyone where we're at in the process and how we got to this part in the process. So, last week at the committee meeting, we had a discussion about potential solutions to the speech that is done downtown, the volume of the speech, timing of the speech. We were presented with three options. We can, you know, continue to just operate as is. Don had brought forth two resolutions if we wanted to entertain them. Probably the biggest question that I have received relates to the First Amendment and how freedom of speech is regulated. And the Supreme Court has regulated, or has ruled that the content of speech cannot be regulated, as we see throughout our community, as we receive many complaints regarding flags that are flown in front of houses and things with offensive language on it. The Supreme Court has ruled that governments do have the ability to regulate time, place, and manner. So, the history of how this got to the committee meeting is, for the past year, and specifically about the last six months or so, I had requested the city attorney look into possible solutions to complaints that I had been receiving downtown on a handful of different reasons. So, one being people who have apartments in the upstairs of downtown have trouble sleeping. They work nights, and they have trouble sleeping during the day if there's loud volume of speech coming during the daytime hours. I've had citizens contact me about obstruction of sidewalks, or just the feeling of the freedom of movement to go downtown based on people who are down there, you know, boisterously, you know, speaking their opinion. And then, the next is the, just general overall safety of where speech happens, loud speech. It currently exists in a very busy intersection downtown. It's the main east-west, north-south arterial way. And so, Don and staff, over, again, the last six months or so, had looked at different options, looked at case law, looked at positive solutions in which we could keep a boisterous manner of freedom of speech in the downtown area. And so, the ultimate resolution that was accepted by the council to move forward to a vote was a resolution that set up free speech zones. And I want the public to understand that free speech zones doesn't mean that free speech only exists in those areas. Basically, those are protected areas in which, you know, a loud, boisterous type of presentation or type of speech can be displayed without the person who is doing the speech having to be concerned about, you know, disturbance of the peace, or unless it's excessive, you know, but it allows for that to happen. And so, Don came up with the solution of, because the city owns two properties downtown in the central business district, the police department and the fire department, we could set zones up there to be established for free speech. And we could also utilize the property at the city hall to be utilized for a free speech zone as well. This is not a unique, this is not a unique idea to the city of Spencer. These exist on college campuses. They do exist in other communities. So, as mayor, what I try to do, anytime I receive a complaint from a citizen, I try to follow the same process. So, we saw that last week with the railroad crossing topic. So, I received an email about loud trains and the train whistles, contacted Don. Don did a little research. There is a way in which you can establish quiet zones. And so, now we're pursuing that path for discussion, should we or should we not be a quiet zone community? This topic is the exact same. So, I look at the interests of everyone that is involved in the manner. I looked at everyone who is involved in the, who's affected in it, and we work through it as a community. So, the process we came out with Wednesday night was to move to a resolution vote on the ordinance that Don had presented. Donovan and I had a phone call on, was it Thursday morning? Thursday, I believe, the day after the committee meeting, and Donovan had concerns about, hey, I think we need to talk a little bit more about this until we move to a vote. We need to vet this a little more in the community. My goal as mayor, I'm in control of the agenda for these meetings, and so I do what I can to make sure that once we have an item on the agenda that's ready for a vote, that everyone is comfortable to vote on, that's the time that we vote on it. And so, at this time, the recommendation was to move it and vote tonight, but I have pulled that, and we'll establish a committee meeting in the next agenda item coming up to talk about this again, receive more feedback from the community. Everyone wants a positive solution to this, and we need to look at it as a community, I think, holistically, and how everyone is impacted. And so, we'll move that back. And just to remind people, if and when we do get to the point to pass a resolution, it follows the same path. Everything does. There's three readings, which takes three council meetings, and public input is always sought and desired. And so, that is the situation. I had a conversation with Wilson Hookman. Wilson wanted me to relay his name and the fact that, we had a conversation in the content of it, and I felt relevant to talk about that tonight very briefly. Wilson's concern was two main points related to free speech. Number one, that we were, we, meaning a city through, you know, establishing free speech zones, was trying to regulate the content of someone preaching the word of God or reading from the Bible. And I can assure you that the direction that the attorney and the staff was given in our discussions, at no point in time did we ever once talk about how this is religious of nature, or this is coming from the Bible, or this is coming from someone's faith. It all dealt with the manner. Again, the Supreme Court has ruled that time, place, and manner is relevant to regulation. It's the manner in which the speech is being conducted. The second concern that Wilson had was that ethnicity was a factor in why we were looking at doing this. And I can assure you again, that at no time in our discussions was ethnicity ever a factor, ever a variable, ever discussed. Again, this goes back to time, place, and manner, and that is the framework in which I, as the mayor, and the council, and I believe the staff, are looking at this as we discuss through how to handle it. And so, I wanted to take time tonight to address it. I will have a press conference later. I try to do them once a month. Usually, they're Usually, they're either between council meetings or they're between the last and the first of the next month. And so, sometime in the next week or two, I will also address this at my monthly press conference. So, with that, I would entertain, any questions anybody has? All right. Item eight, council committee reports. Teresa, or Brian, I guess. May not used to do them.
Couple things. Obviously, obviously, we'll look at scheduling a committee of the whole for the topic that the mayor just discussed. Sometime you wanted that before the next meeting or, so, there's dates that work for everyone. Probably looking at maybe next Monday. Does that work? Pull up a calendar. The 28th. Does that work for?
Bill, Bill, Tom, Ron, Z S?
I'm good.
Donovan, Z S?
5:30, 6, 5:30?
I'm gone next week.
Are you going all week?
Yep.
Okay.
First time in 30 months.
And you're willing to move it for this meeting?
Could you go a day later?
Later, later this week.
The week after that, what's that?
Later this week?
Later this week.
We could, you know, later this week work?
Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday. Thursday's better for Tracy.
Thursday's okay.
Thursday?
I can't do Thursday.
Was there something going on? Tell him Thursday.
Can, can you phone in at all? No. Are you comfortable if we have the meeting without your input or would you like to be here for it? Either, either answer's okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to be here.
Okay. How about, we, we could do it after the next council meeting. I mean, there's not like a deadline for this, so. The next council meeting.
Which is the next item is, will be Tuesday, the 6th.
The 6th. So, we could go on the 7th or 8th. That'd be the Wednesday, Thursday. So, this is July 4th week, I guess you'd call it. 4th is a Sunday.
Sunday, so 5th is the holiday.
6th is the meeting.
How about Monday, the 12th?
I could do Wednesday this.
I'm gone.
You could do Wednesday this week.
How about December 5th?
That's, that's my wife's birthday.
I can do Wednesday this week.
You could do Wednesday this week?
5:30 will be closed.
Okay, Wednesday, is Wednesday this week work? Lauren's out?
Anytime the week of the 12th. Oh, you said you're gone that week, Bill?
About Sunday afternoon.
Will, will everybody be here for the council meeting on the 6th?
Tracy will.
Well, maybe we have to kick it.
I could do it on the. Why don't, uh?
If I, I'll be in South Dakota if I have good internet. Just know where you are.
Can't call one for tomorrow night. It's gotta be 48 hours, right?
24 hours.
24.
The media's here, so there's no noise.
Does tomorrow night late work? Is tomorrow, Tuesday? Are you out Tuesday? Late? Nap time?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead with the 24th and I'll see if I can rearrange some things.
Okay. What day of the week again is that, the 24th?
24th is, this Thursday.
This Thursday? This Thursday works?
Sure.
Sure.
Time would've worked better if we moved it a little later.
No, earlier would be better. Is, is 4:30 crazy for anybody?
Yeah. 5 o'clock, yeah.
No, I'm west of, west of Milford, actually.
Does, does 5, 5 help you?
Yeah, just do whatever.
Tracy, can you make 5? 5? Can we do 5? Okay. 5 o'clock Thursday.
Okay. So, committee of the whole on Thursday, the 24th at 5. Again, the regular council meeting will be Tuesday, the 6th because of the July 4th holiday. And then, sometime I will get with the finance committee. If we could try to meet maybe later in the week of the 28th. Are there any dates for the three of you that don't work that week? Lauren?
During the day is fine too if it works for, for Lauren or.
George?
George. We'll, we'll respect Wednesday for Lauren.
I'm, either that Wednesday or Thursday, later in that week. Of the 28th. So, either like the 30th of June or July 1st. I'm flexible. Talked to the bill a little bit, just wanna kind of go over some year-end before on that. The 6th, we'll do year-end transfers. And so, just kinda go over what we're proposing for those and, and that. So, it's just kinda some year-end, fiscal year-end recommendations. Nope, just the finance committee. What? Yeah, that works. Does the, during the day? I mean, we can do, meet anytime during the day if that works. 10 a.m.?
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock?
George?
Okay, so finance committee will meet July 1st at 10 a.m. And that will be all the committees at this point.
Cool. Thanks, Brian. Item nine, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill, second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item 10, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the floor? Go ahead.
My name is Lenny Skollet. I just moved here. I noticed that you said something about giving the hospital $7 million. And that's great. I'm just kinda curious because I went there just to introduce myself to get all my records in there and everything and they're great. But they're short of doctors, so, you know, it was 15-minute visit took over two hours. I'm just wondering whether you could suggest to the, suggest to them, you know, for the reputation of the city and the hospital and everything else. We wanna make this a great community and it's a great hospital. Let's keep it that way. Why don't you hire more doctors and nurses? I, I just thought that might be a good suggestion for them. I don't know.
Just so I'm clear, Lenny, you're talking about the clinic or were you physically in the hospital? You were at the Avera Clinic.
Clinic, yeah, but it's all Avera gas, isn't it though?
It's, yeah, I mean, the CEO of the hospital's here. He could explain the relationship better. But it's, it's a partnership, you know, between Avera and then our local hospital provides support. And I believe the doctors are employed directly by Avera, right, Bill?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I'll certainly relay your, your concerns on.
Okay, cause it's a great community. So, I wanna keep it that way. Thank you.
Would anyone else like the floor? No? You'll note Jessica left everybody a copy of the prospectus, I believe, that will be going out to interested parties for the city manager position. So, if you have any questions on that, see her afterwards. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First, first by Tom. Was that you Donovan or Tracy? Second by Donovan. First by Tom, second by Donovan. Any comments, questions?
Most guys down there have never, mostly do it.
Well, they're.
We want to say, we like it here. We like it here. We don't wanna leave.
They've also been around a long time, right?
Yeah, that's right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Enjoy the evening.